Good morning, colleagues. A roll call is open since 10:00 a.m. So at this time, we can begin informally on reports. But at this time, we want to welcome also our newly crowned Miss Navajo Nation, Camille Yuntili. So maybe we can provide her some time to introduce herself and also to this committee as a whole. So, Miss Navajo, if you can join us at the presenters table. And we did ask her if she could also provide invocation for us this morning. So we're very excited for her, for her new reign for another year as being our ambassador.
Okay. Yo yate benen ana ana sas koeegi beis basaani dona shlenigui do nichinat a'te a'te. Echehet naana she'e Camille jin Yuntili ini she'sitna jin Yuntili. Ashe bashischin tohana dasha chayala turuk uzu dashanale. Kin dasha chi'de na'sha gathka hu'ee de ayisi she'yaho'a. Di Navajo bitch e'ke na'kerel mi'iro do'ua na'diin eska do'na'kerel mi'iro do'ua na'diin eska. Yo yat e, yo yat e, thank you for coming and attending here, Koeegi, at Nabi Kieyatke. So I'll be starting the invocation if you... Di koejona le'ishama na'sna shutra yadilhis. Altses sin altses na jona e, kleona e, tadidinis ki natonit e. Yoskesana sanalte di in de ne'e. Zillegi sisna zunet so zir to'kusli dependsa zilna a'te ri chol e. A'te di koeegi di'sti Navajo, Nabi Kieyatke a'te yalte egi e. Dinebi keya et e a'te, a'te dene'te do na'ta et en jono go'nseha ke'stole. A'te en jono go yalte tole di'igi a'te e. Altsine it binie do has tu'ido sanipinie. Amado je'ache anale ma'sane a'te di'igi koeegi legislative do hearing koeegi. En jono go'nseha ke'stole do koeegi yaltto, safety yaltto. Aro na'ana jo a'te koeegi legislative aro di. We continue to pursue safety in the manner of greater for the denebi keya a'te. Jo a'te ichehet, ichehet o'jinasli, 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 o'jinasli.
Ichehet, go don, ke'we, Miss Navajo Nation. Do ben kitka ya'na hot e'to leh lto. So thank you, Miss Navajo, for being here with us at our Nabi Kieyatke committee meeting. And thank you, colleagues, for welcoming her. Ichehet. And colleagues, again, good morning. We will start our first informal report, and then I will pause the report once we do reach a quorum. So first, on the report, we did have from DDC. If representatives from DDC could join us here at the presenters table. Again, colleagues, this will be an informal report, and then I will pause once we do reach a quorum, then we'll call the meeting to order. So at this time, I'll allow Dine Development Corporation CEO, Mr. Austin Sosi, provide introductions, and then we will have a shared screen on Zoom and also here on the board. So if you do want a change of slides, just let us know, then we'll keep that slides moving. And colleagues, the hard-ten copies of the presentation should have been emailed and also passed out this morning. So, Mr. Sosi, the floor is yours.
Ichehet, Speaker Curly. Yate shana'tai, and to all the Navajo Nation council delegates, thank you for being here this morning. And thank you, Speaker Curly, for the invitation and the opportunity to be before you. And I'd also like to say ichehet for all those who have made it out here this morning that are in the crowd. So thank you for being here. And, but I'd like to give a special thanks to my DDC family, the staff, and I've got a couple of board members that are here to represent and also have prepared me for this time. But also online, those who are online, ichehet, and thank you for caring about the Navajo Nation and the things that go on within these chamber walls. Ichehet, and thank you. She'e Austin Sosi ini shle, debeth leje nishle ta'achini bashischin. Eschin dashische na'ka dene'e dashanale. I'm Austin Sosi. I'm the CEO for the Dine Development Corporation. I've been with the organization for about 14 years. I was promoted to CEO at year seven. And I really wanted to come before everybody and share the good work that DDC is doing. If we could start, oh, and then I've got my colleagues here. I'd like to give them a second to introduce themselves. So we'll start off with Miss Upshaw.
Yat e shinat ani allano dani do ko nihe dine ko dabe na'ligi. She'ya Dine Development Corporation e ba'na shnesh. Ko bet'ahni e nshlo tworit'i ne'e bashischin. Esine dasha chaydo't yaltat dene'ki ani dashanale. Aro bet'ahni nishnigi e le'shan to'do se'ko honano tsin'ligui aha e aden o. Aro bashischinigi tworit'i ne'e adis yaho'a aj'ynli'igi. Kokot'ao'asen dine stan shlon ko yobachet nisinkue. Nichinat nishna a'stane'de di'linligi yobachet dani zen. And I've, again, thank you to all who are listening. Be well, be blessed.
And I'm Jocelyn Billy Upshaw.
Yat e benen, echehet hwayan'ano yai, a'do hagonanghi dau'ni ri. Ebe na'cha echehet dani zen, Speaker Curly, a'do shenan'at a'do na'shleni. Echehet inkedini do. She'ya osensio tam dasha dine taba'han shlotz na'jini bashischin. Tkatnasanida shachaydo honanani dashanal i'se elak'ajkayda'cha she'ke. A'do shenan'ishish ne'e tribal liaisonoli yani. Ebe na'cha shenan'ishish Dine Development Corporation ba'echehet hwayan'ano yani.
Ichehet, and thank you, colleagues. They are my support, and they are part of the engine that drives the DDC. So let's go to the next slide. And I'll just go over the vision. Leveraging our legacy to achieve, to advance the future of the Navajo Nation and achieve sustainable community prosperity. That's what the DDC is about. 20 years ago, we were formed in these chamber walls. We were created and wholly owned by the Navajo Nation to be an instrumentality, to respond to business needs quicker, and to drive economic development for, and on behalf of the Navajo Nation. So we were part of a diversification strategy. So DDC doesn't depend upon Navajo land or resources. But our diversification is to go off reservation and gather up as much money as possible to bring it back and help the community, and help the community in many forms, whether it be dividends, sponsorships, collaborations, many forms to contribute to the Navajo economy. Next slide. Here's our markets. So we participate in the Department of Defense, FedCIV, or federal civilian markets, health IT, and our tribal and state governments. So we are federal contractors. And we work on behalf of the Navajo Nation to respond to contract needs across the world. We're in 30 states and five countries. We have 711 employees, mostly behind military fences. And this is the engine that helps drive the DDC. Next slide. And here's part of our solutions. So the majority of our work is in the IT arena, from anywhere from cloud adoptions to data enablement, cybersecurity, digital transformations, modernization of software development, and IT service management. So we participate in many forms of IT. And then we have an environmental consulting arm, doing natural resource management, environmental compliance, cultural and resource management. And then we have professional services, business services and technical services. Those are our main areas of work or expertise and capabilities. Next slide. So I wanted to be very clear, and we are a service provider. And how we make our money, it's about volume. In the federal market space, profit margins are hard to come by, but we do achieve them. And so basically, we bid on contracts. And then once that contract is won, then we negotiate with the customer, and then we bring employees aboard. We pay them a base salary, and then we have some add-ons, whether it be GNA and overhead, and then we squeeze our profits out of that. So for every hour an employee works on site, then we bill the customer and we get a profit off the top. Next slide. And so this is the part that's very exciting. It's the new developments within DDC. So let's, next slide. So we're just coming off a major transaction. So we bought a company in Virginia called Spensis, and we integrated into the DDC family of companies. And it was our ninth company, and then we spun another one off of it. So we have 10 companies at DDC. We operate as a family of companies. And so this was a $50 million transaction that we were able to not only diversify our customer set by getting into the Defense Health Agency, but also acquiring technology. And this technology is very powerful. It does nine billion transactions a day in the Defense Health Agency. So imagine that. Anytime a soldier or a retired military person gets a prescription from the VA or goes to the doctor or, you know, has his records updated from anywhere in the world, the transaction is uploaded into this tool, and we gather data from all over the world now. And, but really, the technology that is at the core of this is very powerful, and it's data agnostic. So we're looking at ways to expand it within our federal market, but also we're going to start looking at commercial applications. So imagine being able to suck up millions, if not billions, of records up into the cloud and process them and get useful data out of it. And so, and Navajo Nation now owns that. And, you know, but we are also proud of the talent we acquired. We acquired a lot of data scientists. We acquired a lot of software engineers, and really, this thought leadership. This thought leadership in the Defense Health space that added to our existing innovation footprint. So we've been investing within DDC over the past five years in innovation capacity that drives business results, efficiencies across the board, from processes to technologies. And so this added to our existing footprint of innovation. And we're already seeing a great return on this investment. And, you know, as part of this deal, I mean, we always hear about deals that have gone wrong on the Navajo Nation. But also, we're proud to announce that as part of this deal, the deal was recognized by the M&amp;A Global Network as Deal of the Year. So, you know, the way we framed it up, the way we negotiated, and the way both sides really came together in the end to push a solution forward. I think that's outstanding, that, you know, we have the staff and capability to do a $50 million transaction and have it be a win-win on both sides. And we acquired not only the technical expertise that I talked about, but the talent, and it made sense financially. And the, you know, it added over 200 employees to DDC, and they've all... We planned a year integration, and we integrated within nine months. That's every facet, accounting, HR, IT, security, and even the people and the culture piece. That was pretty awesome. So I'd like to say thanks to all the team members in DDC who made that happen. Next slide. Now let's continue that innovation thread. Okay? So here at the DDC, we've invested in innovation, and particularly in the AI space. I know that's the hot topic right now, but I really wanted to give you a feeling of how we're using it internally and how we're going to market with AI. And it dovetails nicely into the acquisition that I talked about. Because, you know, we've got a technology data solution that does data management, data transformation, and we're wrapping an AI wrapper around that. So we're going to make it smarter. We're going to make it more efficient. We're going to make it, you know, applicable to other solutions. So when I talk about AI, I mean artificial intelligence. So inside of the DDC, we've started in experimental mode within our staff. We published an AI-first strategy to take, to first and foremost, make our operations more efficient, right? So what can AI perform for you on your daily duties that will make you more efficient to be able to focus and proactive items to make sure that you can really drive solutions faster and more efficient? And I'll give you an example. So we're using it to scan RFPs and proposals. And this exercise would take a long time within our staff. And now we're able to do it in minutes, to look at compliance, to look at capabilities, to look at, you know, where the work is done. So all aspects of the RFPs that we look at, we can quickly dissect if it makes... So all aspects of the RFPs that we look at, we can quickly dissect if it makes sense for us to pursue. So that's saving hours, and it's actually allowing us to respond to bids quicker. We have responded to over half a billion dollars in bids as of the second quarter of this year. We haven't won them yet, but it's allowing us to push a lot more thought leadership and just bids out the door. And then our BD teams use AI agents. So these AI agents score and prioritize work on behalf. So we can see what our win themes and our win strategies, and we can be able to prioritize our lead, so we can work on the ones that have a higher win percentage that make sense, right? So it makes us more efficient. And then, let me switch gears to our go-to-market strategy. So within the federal government, there's a lot of legacy systems. So you've got mainframes, old code, right? Fortran assembler. And then we're on this, on the other end of the spectrum, we're on this AI wave. So we've created enablers to be able to transform that code into modern-day code, whether it be JavaScript, Python, or in the matter of, you know, a few minutes. And it not only transforms the code, but it reads the intent of the code. And that is huge, because anybody can do a straight translation. But to understand the intent of the code and make it bigger and better is really powerful. So we started to push these solutions out to our federal customers. So this is going to be huge for us. And then we've also, and back to our operations, we made resume analyzers. So it's so hard to recruit people. And nowadays, you've got a lot of misinformation out there with respect to people applying for jobs. I mean, there's AI bots out there applying to jobs. There are AI bots out there doing interviews. And so they're trying to garner fiscal information from people. And so we are, we are using AI to be a resume analyzer, to get to the candidates quicker, to be able to analyze which ones are AI-generated and which ones are real people. I mean, that's a real problem in the IT industry. And then even, you know, the, like I said, the general staff, as far as our AI-first priorities, is we're all in experimental mode, right? So before you touch your keyboard, we've given the staff, how can AI make your life easier and better? So we've set up a space within DDC to be able to work through some of these use cases and let the ideas flow from the people. And even on preparation, we used AI to prepare for this meeting today. So we went out and extracted all public information on the delegates yourself, so we can prepare, right? What are your priorities? Because, you know, we've got everybody's priorities, so we can be better educated and anticipate your needs. And so, you know, where are you listed in the news? So there's a lot of profile and public information that's already out there. So we've gathered profiles, and we were trying to reverse engineer questions. So when, you know, the delegates have priorities, well, what's their anticipated questions? That way, we can start to understand each other a lot more. Was all of the data right? No. So we had to go in there and look at it and do a sanity check and really say, you know, would delegate Nota, would he ask it like this? Well, not really, you know? And so, but it helped us prepare. So at least we're given insight, and we could better meet the council needs. So a lot of good stuff happening in the AI arena with DDC, both internally and externally, that we are proud to share and we want to collaborate. All right, next slide. Now let's go into our social impact model. Next slide. So what we've done, we used to be, a couple of years ago, we used to just try to track how many dollars that we spent on Navajo initiatives, Navajo sponsorships, Navajo collaboration, and dividends. But we created this model off of an impact model, right? And this impact model is being used by many tribals across this nation, but mainly up north with our tribal brothers and sisters up there. They've created a social model to really try to measure the wellness of the people. And it's broken up into four quadrants: community benefit, wealth creation, environmental stewardship, and economic reconciliation. Most, if not all, of our priorities and...
All right. So thank you, Mr. Sosi. We usually allow 20 minutes for the presentation. And colleagues, it is now 10:45 a.m., and we only have 11 members here. I have not received any other messages from other colleagues that will be joining us or if they will be late. So colleagues, I'm going to call this meeting, and we will just postpone it, and then we can call another Nabaiki Etiquette Committee meeting. I know many of our colleagues are out, either in their districts or either at other meetings. So again, apologies and colleagues. So thank you. But first, Chair James.
Ikeha, Speaker. Really quickly, it's not pertaining to the report. Thank you for calling the meeting. But for our next meeting, in regards to a subpoena, if we can get that started, and hopefully, as Nabaiki Etiquette, we can all get on the same page to get information regarding the email that we received from Controller. And this was last night. There was, there are certain things that he had listed, but if we can work on that as Nabaiki Etiquette, to do subpoena on all those items, just wanted to mention that really quickly before we get released here. Thank you, Ikeha.
All right, thank you, Chair James. And I'll sit down with our legal counsel here, Ms. Espino, on those next steps. I know it's a very sensitive topic right now. There's ongoing investigations. So again, we'll look back to our legal guidance from Ms. Espino on which direction to take. So again, thank you for that, Chair James, and that is duly noted. So again, colleagues, I'll be calling this meeting here 10:47. So thank you again, and travel home safely. Ikeha. Hey, colleagues, if you're still around and our guests, I believe DDC was sponsoring lunch, so feel free to come back at 12, Ms. Navajo, and even our guests that are here. The chambers will be open around that time.